Welcome to the Black Youth Leadership Project. Welcome here to our latest panel, the education panel. There's a number of educators from various walks of education from all across the country that we want to share here with you. We have Chanel Poe, she's in Arizona, Chris Orr in California, Sam Starnes. Janae, there's a wide variety of topics that we have to discuss. I think I missed Corinne. Corinne is in New York. So we have kind of a wide spectrum here. We're across a variety of different states, but the problem is kind of the same. And there are COVID issues to talk about as it relates to learning, both whether it's virtual learning, distant learning, whether it's in-school learning, whether it's trying to teach and be in a school during this pandemic, or there are issues that existed in the educational system long before COVID struck and became a global pandemic. So we're going to start here because we're getting ready to approach. And Chanel, I want to start with you in Arizona because I know you've been talking about, I know you've been in meetings about this all day. And it's about virtual learning and the approach that educators are taking now as we enter what might be an entire year of distant learning, what might be an entire year of students being out of schools versus back in March. When we started, it was kind of like, okay, let's just kind of get through this. Let's just kind of see what happens. The school year is almost over, but now we're staring at something entirely different where we could see kids at a school for maybe up to an entire year.
Yeah, so when you think about, and thank you Damian, and I'm so excited to be here with this esteemed panel. Thank you so much for hosting. When you talk about some of those pre-COVID problems is really what we call them. We talk a lot about, and a lot of the conversation is around the digital divide. Which school districts can provide a launch? As you said, our districts were upended essentially in March. We did not know if we were going to have a retiring date, what would that date be? But we knew that we had to continue to fulfill our obligation, and that's to educate our students. So immediately, we started dispersing laptops. And we realized that there were some families who had had a device, but did not have access to it. So we also had to purchase hotspots in the community so that our students can have access to their online curriculum. There was also a large number of students, in our district in particular, more like 800 out of 2,400 students that were disconnected, that did not get an opportunity to have an actual device and did not have an opportunity to even show back up at the school. So eventually, what our district did, our elementary school district, is that we mailed homework packets to everyone. And with the hope that our students would still stay engaged. And we actually were initially, the district wanted to collect the laptops to get them prepared for the next school year. But we knew that we just could not leave our students without any type of connectivity. And since we were really pushing for that, we let all of our students, except for our eighth graders who were graduating, hold on to their devices for the next year. But there were deep inequities. One in four children in the state of Arizona go hungry. When you think about receiving those meals that students some rely on from their local school districts, districts such as mine, really worked to be able to provide meals to families, not just students in our district, but those who were 18 and under. Thank goodness, our state education department provided us with a waiver for the summer food program. But we're still feeding families, up to 7,000 families per week. So when you talk about some of those pre-COVID problems, when COVID came on the scene, those problems have been exacerbated. We were not necessarily given any direct plan or leadership, or very much guidance from state leadership, being the governor and our superintendent of public instruction. So if you were not working from March to now to really plan what school is going to look like, whether it be virtual or some that may be in-person, these are the plans that we have to work on and turn in. In some school districts like mine, we were not accredited by the Arizona online education. So now, school districts also had to get accreditation to have online. And then, of course, with online, you want to make sure that you are choosing the right curriculum. And you want to make sure that that's research-based curriculum for your students. So I could kind of go on, but I would like to hear from some of the other panelists. But again, these are some of the problems that were exacerbated due to COVID-19. And they're issues that we are still working to navigate through.
And there's one thing that you touched on that I do want to make sure that we hit someone from each different state. Corinne, I'd like to go to you in New York and get, like, do you have a number of how many, I'm going to steal the term that Chanel used, kids that have been disconnected? Do you have an idea in New York, how many kids have been disconnected since March and distance learning has started?
I mean, I don't have an exact number for you, but I can tell you that here in my district, it's been really troublesome. So we started out in March with students being engaged. And we were seeing, like, by week, we were losing a third of those who were engaged, you know? So leaving us at the end of the year with just about one-third of our students even participating in the online learning that was available to them. And I think that this pattern is going throughout New York State. And so it's something that we have been trying to work on locally here in my district. But there are other folks in the New York State area who are looking to provide guidance to educators, to districts, to teachers, to create online learning that's going to be more engaging for students and is going to work with them during this very, very trying time.
You know, it's interesting hearing about engagement. And I wonder, how much of engagement is an issue? And Sam, I'll go to you, you're in Southern California. And I think, do you have a number for California in terms of, because I think this was a number we talked about kind of in our discussion yesterday, is the number of kids that have been disconnected in California so far?
It's, and we have 730 children in LAUSD, 700,000 children in LAUSD. And 16,000 of them were disconnected according to the reports that we got from our superintendent. So yeah, it's pretty big.
And now my concern, Chris, I'd like to go to you for the first time, is, if kids were engaged or disconnected or not engaged for such a short period of time, you know, going back to March when you're just talking about getting to the end of the school year, how do we get them engaged for what could be an entire school year away from campus?
Man, I think that's the million-dollar question that all of us educators are trying to answer. And I appreciate Sister Chanel and some of the suggestions that she made. Because I think a lot of school folks, and I know we did on our end as well, is immediately, we move quick to get Chromebooks into students, get devices into their hands. And I know, in thinking about the equity behind all this, maybe that's something that should have been done a long time ago. But now that we're facing a pandemic, it became more urgent. We have to put devices in these young people's hands, so we did. The second piece was, okay, now that we have devices, what about service? How do they get internet? Everybody doesn't have that. So bringing with Comcast, for example, was able to have folks apply and they would get internet service for six months. Hotspots, as Chanel mentioned, is what we purchased and gave to our families. So it was ensuring that 100% of our families and kids had devices. The second piece, and it's interesting that we do this because for years, you know, there became a focus on assessment and testing and things of that nature, but really teaching the creativity and the connection that instructors, teachers have with students is what we ended up relying on. When we talk about disconnection from students, we really relied on those relationships. And we were calling and talking to parents one-on-one. And teachers were creating fun environments for young people to get involved in. And there's nothing like being face-to-face. There's nothing like that. But we have to mimic that the best way we can in a digital way. And relationships and connections and excitement and fun, we have to be super, super creative. And of all people, teachers are the ones that are creative in this way. So relying on them to be able to support that engagement, I think, is very important.
Janae, you want to jump in here? I'm so sorry, Corinne.
Well, Corinne, go ahead, Corinne.
So I just kind of wanted to piggyback off of those ideas. And absolutely, so we have some phenomenal teachers here in the Binghamton district. But we also were able to deploy one-on-one devices to all of our students across the district. We have about 5,000 kids. We were able to do that. And there still was a disconnect, right? So when we talk about the digital divide, it's not only having that piece of electronic to work on, it's knowing how to use it and how to use these programs. So myself, I don't have children, but I do have nieces and nephews in the district. So I have a niece who's in kindergarten. And so now, what we were essentially saying is, okay, here, little six-year-old, I need you to get online and read this book and click here and then answer these questions. And so I still had to work full-time. My mom was trying to help support her with that. And she's a different generation, right? And so when we're thinking about that digital divide, we also have to think about the use of that technology, the fluency and all of that. So one thing that my district is planning to do for next year is we are continuing our food programs throughout the year and throughout the summer. And so we are going to attempt to have these little learning sessions, if you will, to help families, loved ones, to help learn how to utilize this technology that they're supposed to be using to make sure that their kids are engaged. So I just wanted to add that piece because our kids have the things that they needed. They had the internet service, but they just didn't know how to use the programs.
And just to Corinne's point, to have that support from parental or have an adult, some people, when we think about equity being at the core issue, what families are able to do that? And I want to take it a step further and think about families who are homeless, those experiencing homelessness, our English language learners, our special education students. Some of these needs require different types of support. And it's a very controversial issue because we know that everything is being pushed down from us from the federal level and also from the state level, from our governors, with the laws and the particular mandates that they are tying to public education, to our per people funding. So I appreciate those teachers that were created to engage those students, but that creativity and also that level of engagement has to be a constant. It was something that I really spoke to our superintendent about even last week, making sure that we develop a list of resources and ask our families, what is it that they need? Because we know that students, again, pre-COVID problems, not only were dealing with systemic racism in instruction, but also in the classroom. And in addition to that, childhood trauma, adverse childhood experiences, whether they have an incarcerated parent, whether they're living in poverty, whether they're a victim of sexual assault or witnessing violence in the home, these composite issues makes it tough. So again, it's not a focal. We have to be able, especially from a governance standpoint like Corinne and I, we have to be able to look at the whole, the big picture, the much larger picture. And for those students who are thriving online, let me tell you something. We're going to give you the best curriculum. We are going to give you the necessary supports that it is that you need. But we also can't leave out our children who need additional in-person supports. Those who are learning the English language, those who may be special education. So when we think about equity, we are still working to help meet the needs of that whole child. But let me say this, our funding, depending upon what state you're in, if you're going to get the funding that you need to have those devices, we, our district was thinking ahead of time when we went out for a bond where we were able to get funding to have a one-on-one. But still, we have to do consistent levels of outreach and meeting our students where they are.
Especially the black students, yeah. Because what we found here in LAUSD or just LA period was that there were homeless children. I think we talked about this earlier. There were homeless children who literally had to camp out or sit in front of a Starbucks or a cafe to get internet access. So there was a big gap there that everyone really didn't think about. They were kind of left to the side. We don't know how many of those children were black children, but even if it was one black child, that's too many.
I think when we look at our achievement rate, right? I know a lot of us, if we get a chance to look at the data to see where our students are, if we think about black students, I know particularly in Phoenix, it's not a lot of us. And I think it's a lot of us, but in actuality, we may have like 6.5% from the last census. By the time this census come, maybe I'm going to say close to 9, 10, 10%. But depending upon your family makeup, if you have a single-parent family or working-parent families, you are left behind. Let's not forget about implicit bias. When you have educators in the classroom that do not understand you and may have implicit bias, when we see in our student suspension, who's kicked out of school at a higher rate, African-American students, when there's such a small number of us, we see that those disparities are very clear. So what are we doing to help disrupt them by further engaging our African-American students? And we need to make sure that we have culturally relevant curriculum.
You guys touched on a number of topics. That one in particular, Chanel, we're going to expand on. But I want to go back to a couple of things. Janae, I want to bring you in here in just a heartbeat. But I want to bring in Sharina Shaw, who's joining us for the first time as well. How do you, like, you talked about, we've talked about internet access and we've talked about Chromebook access. Chris brought that up earlier. But one thing I don't think we've really discussed yet is what about children who have like learning disabilities? And I don't mean like severe learning disabilities. I mean more from the sense of, I know for me, sometimes it helped to have, like, I could see something on a screen and not get it. But Sharina, have you explained something to me? Oh, okay, wait a minute, I get it. We're losing that element. We're essentially losing the element of a teacher being in front of us and walking through a subject. And I wonder how much that contributes to the disconnect rate that we've talked about, both in New York, California and Arizona?
Well, that's a global issue. And that's an issue that happens in a classroom and outside of the classroom. In my household alone, I have five children with four different learning disabilities. So it's substantial. But as parents, part of our job is to teach people how to treat and to teach our children. So if one of my children is not getting it, their teachers have been taught by my child, because my child is an autonomous human. My child is told that they get to ask questions. They're told that they get to take up space. They're told that they get to stop the classroom, like, yo, I don't get it. We're going to slow this down, and I have the right to do that. So a big part of it is, A, teaching our children that their voice matters so that they can do that. The other part in teaching your teachers how to treat you, especially when having this need met virtually, is making sure that the teachers understand the space and scope of the student. So that they understand, like, when student A kind of starts looking around, maybe she needs to be drawn back in. Or maybe that's when a teacher needs to call or text a parent and say, hey, pull her off the computer for 20 minutes. Let her go run outside. Let her go play on a trampoline so that she can then plug back in. And then, in about 20 minutes, I'll have time to go through that with her one-on-one. So a big part of making this work is the students being allowed to have a voice. The parents and the students making sure that educators teach them how to be taught. And allowing all parties to have open communication that is fluid. Not a one-time email, like, this is not the day you know your teacher. If I had it up to me, whomever a child had last year, they'd have this year. Because building a relationship during this time, it's difficult. It's extraordinarily difficult. But the teachers who say and call and say, hey, Kendall's tired. Go on her take a nap. This is more than enough screen time. We're doing art at 2 o'clock. Have her log back in at 2 o'clock. And I'll text you the stuff that we missed or that she may have missed if you want to go over it later. But we're going over it again tomorrow. So a big part of it is respecting the emotional capacity and the social-emotional capacity that we're asking these babies to sit on a computer. We're asking these parents to step in a different way. We're asking teachers to learn in a way that's contrary to when we were taught when we went to school. And everybody is kind of in this new role. So it's about adaptability and communication. And most importantly, we have to take up space. As black parents, as black educators, as black community people, as black stakeholders, we have to take up space. And this is the time when we definitely teach our children, you're allowed to take up space because, okay, your education matters, your mental health matters, your life matters. All of these things are critical components to educating with joy.
Janae, I actually want to stick with parents here just for a minute. Before I get to that, I want to remind everybody, if you're watching on YouTube or Facebook or whatever platform you're watching on, you can ask questions and we'll get to them. Feel free to interact with this live panel. We're so happy that you have decided to join us here as part of the Black Youth Leadership Project. Janae, let's stick with parents here just for a minute because Sharina talked about everybody being in kind of a different role. We have a situation now where, at least in California back in March, things were kind of shut down in March. When school came to an end, the streets were dry. Businesses were told, we don't care, you're closing. Everybody is closing unless you're an essential worker. That's not necessarily the case anymore. As people are being told to go back to work, they're just being told to go back to work with masks on or they're being told to go back to work with masks and gloves on. But that's not the case with students. So now you could have situations where Sharina was talking about, we've got to change our roles and we've got to have active parents. But now we could have a situation where we have parents going back to work while the kid has to stay home and essentially homeschool themselves. And I see that being a major problem heading into this upcoming fall semester.
Yeah, and I totally agree with that. I think a lot of times, we, there's such a socioeconomic disconnect when people, administrators, make decisions about what students will be able to do and what the expectations are. My hope is that parents are, they feel empowered, that there are alternative ways to actually educate their kid. And I'm hoping that more of the parents are willing to be present, occupy that space, to say, hey, you know what, I have to work during these hours. I cannot sit with my kid and engage with them for the five, six hours you're requiring them to be online or whatever the stipulations are. And I'm hoping that parents will be brave enough to actually speak out and say, hey, you know what, this doesn't work for us. We have a different schedule. This doesn't, you know, my kid is not engaging when they're sitting at a computer screen for five, six, seven hours out of the day. You know, and I don't want my child to be what they consider left behind, right? Parents need to feel empowered and emboldened that they can get in front of somebody's face and say, this does not work for me. And as a homeschooler, I can certainly attest to the fact that you don't have to stick to a strict schedule. And I'm hoping that there is flexibility for these parents who have to return to work and leave their child under the care of someone else so that the kids' needs are met across the board. So I hope that comes into the discussion a little bit, in terms of flexibility. We continue these cycles of inequity when we don't address the individual family situations. Our story, we know this, is not a monolith. And we have families in so many different situations. Socio-economically, we're talking about marital status. We're talking about being raised by a grandparent. Where you, someone mentioned earlier that sometimes we have one parent that's incarcerated. Sometimes we have both parents who are incarcerated. How are we just making sure that the system is indeed being flexible to accommodate all of our students?
Chanel, I see you itching to jump in. Go ahead.
I love to hear from a parent voice. And I just really, I really honor parents who have the tenacity, who have the climate, who have the will and that are able to homeschool their children. But coming from a governance standpoint, again, we have mandates from the state. And the state governor has made a mandate to make sure that when those lesson plans are turned in, we got to have at least, we have to meet a criteria of certain subjects that have to have a certain number of hours. How they decide to break those schedules up is what the calendar's up, is what the principals are working on right now. But what I do appreciate about teachers who do have strong relationships with their students, from what I've seen, is that they have been working with parents online, knowing when some children, and remember, I'm elementary school. So it's very challenging for our K through five graders and mostly for our K through second graders due to their not being strong curriculum in place for them. But David, I want to kind of touch back on when you talked about those parents who do have to go to work and if they have to leave their students at home. I want everybody to keep in mind that when the pandemic first hit, there were daycares that were still open, the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club. Our first responders utilized school buildings as the governor deemed enrichment centers. So these things have still been going on. But for parents who have nowhere to take their children, what I worry about specifically regarding black children in the state of Arizona is that we are over Child Protective Services. We are over CPS. And if this comes to the authorities' attention that there are children that are home, unaccompanied children at home at elementary school age, I'm afraid that these children will be removed from their home. So when you talk about having those two supports and parents being able to get the support that they needed, again, we saw that first responders, maybe some essential worker families, were able to get that childcare in effect of the pandemic. But now, the options are getting slimmer for some of our families.
Okay, hang on, everybody, because everybody's body language indicated that they wanted to respond to that. But we're going to go with Sharina, Sam and then Chris. Sharina, Sam and then Chris. Go ahead, Sharina.
One thing I want to be very, very, very careful about is the assumption that when someone says homeschool, that we are thinking lack of educated, not educator, or just at home doing what we feel like doing. Because that's not the case. Sis has an MS and an IMIT. Okay? I was an administrator of an entire school before I did this at home. And every state law y'all meet, we meet, and we exceed it. So I don't like the tone or attitude that when we discuss homeschoolers or alternative ed, it's somehow something that is not meeting the standard. That is not the case. Our kids aren't going to Berkeley and Stanford and Howard and Hampton and Brown and all of these schools not meeting the standard. We're beating them. We crush them. So I really want to mark that narrative because it's a problem in the black community. It's a big problem that people assume that we're doing less than. And it's not the case because my sophomore in high school is a junior in college.
Absolutely. You know, I have students at RBG Academy that also are very, even younger, withholding college credits. You know, and the reality is that we, you know, when we talk about homeschooling as an alternative, first off, we need to remember that what we do as homeschoolers isn't what we've done so far in COVID. Okay? It does not look like that. And not only that, but there is a wide range of what we are capable of doing when we homeschool. There are several different methods. There are several different schools of thought. Sharina is an unschooler. Sam does hybrid, and I am strictly kind of in the middle. You know, and there are so many black families who have taken this plunge because they want to be, feel more empowered when it comes to their kids' education. You know, when we talk about inequity, it's not just inequity with being able to have a laptop or access to the internet. We're talking about inequity in terms of, you know, the educational achievement gap.
What educating means or what learning means. Like, if you want your teen to learn to drive, do you want the kid who just learned to drive last week to teach him? Or you want the dude who's been racing a car for 20 years to teach him? Y'all aren't like, and by y'all, and I get passionate about this, but it's because my inbox has been blown up. People aren't talking to homeschoolers about how to distance educate their children. The people who've been doing it for years.
Absolutely.
When we speak, people say, oh, but there's numbers, but there's curriculum, but there's this. We have to do all that also.
Sam, get in there. You're like double duck. You got to see that spot and you got to get in.
So this is my crew right here.
So when we talk about homeschool, when we talk about hybrid, the Learning Individual Studies Academy or the LISA Learning Center was birthed. That part was birthed out of this. It's been a private school for a very long time. When I saw the inequities, when I really looked up the data and saw that only 50% of African-American students are able to go to a UC or a Cal State to apply, that means that they don't have the right classes. That means they didn't meet the SATs, the minimum for the SAT. Something is wrong. So if something is wrong, and if you're one of those parents who just love the public school system, great, come on. There are charter principals like Chris, there are charter principals all around who will meet you where you are. There are also homeschool families. You can come here and bring your whole crew and still be a homeschool family. Because people are not understanding that a lot of people have more than one child. So in this whole pandemic that's going on, teachers were doing the absolute best that they could for their student, not understanding that the parent who has three children, that's three times one, two, three. Okay, that's six classes with three students. Last time I checked, I was 18. Is my mouth right? Last time I checked, I was 18, is my mouth right? No. Is it right?
We weren't told we were gonna have to do math on this. We were, we were not told that we would have to do math.
That's 18 different teachers that that one parent has to deal with.
Right.
And you know, the, the devices that, that the children have within the families before the schools gave them out, nobody, parents weren't really trying to check in to see if they can do adaptive math on um, you know what I mean, on their computer, they, on their tablet, they were trying to see if they can be entertained by it. So I will implore everybody, bam, oh yeah, I will talk, I implore every parent, if you have to leave your child at home, please find a place to send them. There are learning pods, there are pandemic pods, there are cohorts and all that other stuff. But talk to your principals if you're inside of a school and let them know, look, I can't do this. Or talk to a homeschooler who is doing it and empower yourself to understand that, you know what? I may not be able to school from the traditional eight to four or eight to three. How about I homeschool from seven to nine? That was my son. He was not, he wasn't having it in the morning, but there was something that happened right around two o'clock that made him, I don't know what it was, just made him ready to learn. And when he was, when I was homeschooling, I was like, okay, this is how we're gonna do it. In addition to when he was learning his timetables and things like that, he could not learn the timetable, sitting down doing rope memorization, which as a master teacher, I know that that's the best way for children to learn uh math facts. He was outside hooping. He found the answer and he hit the shot. I asked him to go to this one, that one, and he hit the shot. Which is why I said, you know what, if we open this center, it has to be huge, it has to be big. Everyone has to make sure that they can work on their passion. So talk to your principals. Talk to them and let them know, hey, can you, if, if, if we as a community open up our mouths and say, you have that big old yard over there. Your teachers are inside of the classroom, can my baby just come over here and work at the lunch bench? If you're at a charter school, you know, they may be able to accommodate you. If you're in a, with a group of homeschoolers, let me tell you, no homeschooling mom, dad, grandma, aunt is gonna let your baby fall behind.
Chris, go ahead.
I think what, I, I love this conversation and thank you for opening this up and having these minds come together. Tammy, Shanina, I'm a hundred, I, I, what I'm hearing in this conversation um is, is a couple of things, is one choice. Right? Nobody knows their children better than mom and dad. Let them, let them make a choice. Be able to explore, here's what we do, and every child needs something different, that's what parents are for, and I've always honored that. So I really, really love and appreciate that, and I think that's one of the things. The second thing, and I think you mentioned it before, is student voice and parent voice. We want, so for example, charter school principal, I'm on the ground floor. And what we've done is, you're right, we did a model last spring because it was like urgent. We gotta get something in front of kids, and we did it, right? But always looking at, how do we do it better? So this fall, we created a program where I think that we're gonna be able to do it better. But I'm going into it knowing that it's not gonna work perfectly for every kid. I need to hear from those parents and those children, and I have to be nimble. We have to be able to adapt to what each one of these kids need. That's the flexibility that we have to be able to expose ourselves to, so I'm fully prepared for that. And we may go into it with, I think we're gonna do this. Two months from now, we may be saying, oh, we've made three or four adjustments since then, because that's what's necessary for young people. We have to be prepared for that. This is a pandemic that's crazy, nobody has the silver bullet, so we have, and I think a key piece of that is listening. We have to listen to our children, we have to listen to the families that are at home with them. I'll give you a great example, we opened up, we had our teachers come back today in a virtual meeting, and we're doing PDs and stuff for our teachers. One of our teachers um has a daughter that's in school that started today. So while she was on a Zoom meeting with us, her daughter was in class. So she's trying to figure it out live, how do I support her and be on this meeting at the same time? And she's acting, and she's seeing problems, and I honor that. I'm like, listen, what you're experiencing is perfect for us to know, because our families are gonna be experiencing the same thing. How do we make that fix for them? We gotta listen, and we have to be ready to be nimble and be able to adapt to families and to students.
I really appreciate that. Because what you did was that you talked about how parents do have choices. What we said was that, I wanted to just make my statement clear, when I talked about hours, I was talking about governing bodies that have to follow a statute. And I also thank parents who have an opportunity to homeschool, who may never have that. But it is different learning styles, and people do have, parents need to have options. But in the narrative that I hear about this reopening schools, that's one narrative I don't hear. I don't hear what families want to do, I don't hear what parents want to do, and they are our consumers, they are our clients. They are the people, if we don't have students, then we don't have an institution. Um, so that student voice does play a big role, but I also want to hear from students, what does work best for them? And as you said, Chris, information is changing daily. We're not gonna receive our guidelines from our state about reopening, of course, that's like fully reopening until Friday. So again, we do have to be able to adapt, and thank goodness, we serve students in our district that deal with resiliency. Um, so that will work to modify, and we will continue to help build those relationships and help see them through because it's no one-size-fit-all.
There's another dynamic here that's worth addressing, and Corinne, I want to try to bring you in here too, because Chris was talking about listening, Chanel was talking about listening. But I, I, I feel like this opens the door up for a conversation about like mental health. And whether it's the mental health of the students, whether it's the mental health of the parents, whether it's the mental health of the educators, I feel like as you're a student too, particularly in this, you know, there's so many different directions to go with this, like depending on how old you are, there are kids who are experiencing this Black Lives Matter movement, and they're getting a full grasp of racism, perhaps for the first time in their life. They're seeing, you know, racism, they're, they're essentially seeing, you know, a form of a civil rights movement happening, you know, within their lifetime. And as we're talking, you know, to and about black kids, there is a mental health aspect, I think, to all of this and dealing with, you know, the movement that is happening in terms of, you know, civil rights and race relations in this country, as well as the global pandemic, which, you know, ties in like all of our health and wellness. Corinne, have, have, have there been discussions, you know, within your, you know, school districts in New York about the mental health component of homeschooling and all of these different things going on for your students?
Um, so I won't say specifically about homeschooling, but we have been talking about mental health. It's been a growing concern because we know that we are not addressing it. Do you have one, something you want to say?
You're not homeschooling, they're doing at home education.
Oh, I'm, yes, okay, sorry, so I took it as like homeschooling.
I always do, I, I don't know Serena very well, but I can tell when someone has said something that's fucking forward. And she's gonna make sure, she's gonna make sure she's noticed, I'm sorry, Corinne, go, go ahead.
Yes, but thank you, because actually she and I were on the same page, so I didn't um understand what you were asking me. So yes, for our students who are learning at home through our distance learning from our public school of system, it is something that we are thinking about. Um, we are trying to see if there are ways that we can still connect them with resources through our schools, because um a lot of our schools, we're, we're trying to implement like a community schools model. So we know that these are very, very important resources in the community, and we're trying to connect kids um as best we can. We don't, again, I, I love that you said, um, we don't have the answers for everything, we're just trying as we go along. Um, but I really love all of the discussion about flexibility and choice. Um, so I know, again, for myself, my, like I had a niece who was in kindergarten, one was in second grade, and then my nephew was in ninth grade, and I was trying to support them through education. I was getting text messages from their teachers at um like seven at night, right? So it, it varied, and they, they are putting in the work and I appreciate that. Um, but there's still the fact of the matter that my niece was up at 3:00 AM. Um, she was snacking a lot, so we really need to be doing more to address that. Um, and, and we, we haven't found the answer just yet, but we know it's a need, it's on the top of my mind, and um I, I'd love any suggestions anyone has for us.
Go ahead, Sam.
Okay, so we have a lady on our board, uh Dr. Evangeline Bishop. She is the, she's a child psychologist who sits here, and she works with the children and talks to them. The reason why we're closed on Fridays is because we're getting training from her, we're turning in our notes to her and saying, hey, this child was doing X, Y, and Z. We don't have the answers, but since every single black person who has any type of degree in psychology or education knows that this is an issue, I need them to stand up. I need them to stand up and reach out and say, you know what, I'm still paying student loans, but I can volunteer some time and help you and train you as a parent and as an educator. Not saying that parents are not educators, I'm saying making sure that you go and through the channels to find the help that's needed. If you're black and you're out there, what, what did I hear?
At me, I'll do a training for your staff.
Okay.
Would, would you do a training for our staff as well, or are you like volunteering for folks?
You're so good, I don't need you to volunteer, Serena, we gonna pay you. But yeah, that's, that's what, that's what we're doing here, and I know that there are other uh mental health people out there who can actually give some time. They need to give this time to our babies. I'm sure where they're working, they have to deal with all of them, but we are the ones that in need. When we say unapologetically black here, that's what it means, our babies. And it doesn't matter if they're little or big, they baby.
I, I think part of, e- early on, I was getting, uh, you know, early on in the pandemic, I was getting a lot of requests on how, how to help make this transition um easy for their kids. Um, you know, and I think one thing that we need to remember as we are seeking these solutions, of course, is that our children are whole entire humans. Right? They're whole entire humans with emotions, with feelings, they gave up a lot, just like we gave up a lot. Don't think that they didn't have some sort of um, you know, discomfort when we began making a transition to this uh quote-unquote lockdown, right? And now they're looking at their next school year at, you know, with new eyes. They have to, they have to readjust, readjust, they have to define what that looks like. I don't even want to use the word redefine, because this is new to them, just like it's new to everybody else. And we have to be extremely gracious as we approach these solutions. Um, considering that um, you know, they're not adults and they're not in, in full understanding of their emotions and whatnot just yet, they're, they're building that. We're teaching them how to use their words, and as they're developing, we need to make sure that we're providing the tools so that they can develop their voice and say, hey, you know what, this doesn't work for me. Hey, you know what, I'm tired, I really don't want to log on today. Are we, can I go to the playground? I mean, we're, we're at home, do I get to go outside and have what they call recess? You know, like, we need to make sure that we are really, um, somebody used the word earlier today, listening, listening to the kids, what is it that you need? You know, part of what we do as homeschoolers is oftentimes we, we respond to what our children are responding to. So we have that luxury as our children are saying, hey, you know what, I want to learn about blah, blah, blah. Well, we come right behind them and feed them whatever that is, right? The same has to be done when we think about their mental health. Hey, you know what, I need a break. And it can't be, no, you need to sit down and you need to do this, and you need to get this done, your teacher said you gotta get it done by blah, 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 you know. We have to be extremely gracious as we're approaching this, and I get it, the state has um, you know, mandates and benchmarks and things that they want to see. They, they want to be able to, to show uh results, and I know that that's tied to funding and, and a lot of that, um, you know, homeschoolers, we do have to deal with as well. Um, we have to be accountable to somebody to some, to some degree, right? Um, but within that, we need to make sure that, you know, even if we have to push it all the way to the governor to say, hey, we need to make sure our students are part of this discussion. We need to make sure that we are um uh providing an outlet for our kids to be a whole entire child. Not just an autonomous person who sits down and gets this curriculum done because they have, you know, something that uh some benchmark that they have to meet, but rather that we are seriously working to nurture the whole entire child. That is, that, that is the beginning of approaching this mental health piece.
Um, and children are born tiny and autonomous. They're born tiny, whole, and autonomous humans. And I think as black folks in general, we miss that. And sometimes it drives my husband through the wall, because the children, they get a little mouthy sometimes, he'll be like, I don't know about this autonomous child thing. But um, in raising autonomous children, when we're discussing mental health, when we're discussing COVID, when we're discussing all of these things, a lot of it takes the weight off of you as an parent. Because when my kids work with their teachers, and yes, they're homeschoolers and they have teachers, because if they want that AG class, they gotta take that AG class, they have to go to the university, they still have to do all those things. They don't need me to be their mouthpiece. My kid is saying, listen, I'm tired, I don't feel good, would you like a note from my therapist? Because I'm not doing X, Y, and Z today, I'll have it for you by the due date. Or I'm not doing this today, they have learned to set and create their own boundaries. And one of the big components of this for teachers, the teachers that I'm working with in mindfulness trainings, and the students that I'm working with, and the families that I'm working with, is creating boundaries. Like in a lot of the homeschool parent groups and the charter school parent groups, the parents are like, oh my God, where's the teacher? I'm like having summer break. You know, give them their time, because they're doing this through a pandemic too, they're trying to get their kids straight too. If a teacher emails me at seven o'clock and, you know, it's not an emergency, I'm like, you know, I'm not looking at this till tomorrow morning. And I expect the teacher to do the same, and I want the teacher to do the same, because when they interact with my child, I want them to be whole and not exhausted. So I think that everybody needs to go back and really examine the importance of being autonomous while virtual, because it's so easy to cross that line and say, oh, I'm gonna send an email. Now, I'm notorious for sending my teachers emails at 11, 12, 1, 2, 3 o'clock at night, because that's when I work best. And I have a kid who works best in the middle of the night. But my teacher also know, because I've told him, I don't expect you to look at these tonight. But don't expect me to answer them at seven, because I don't get up till 10. And anybody, you're laughing, Sam, but you know it's true. When people come schedule me, the first appointment is 10:30. Um, why? Because I have learners who work well in the middle of the night, and I respect their internal clock. So a big part of the mental health is allowing children to learn, allowing them to fail. Because they're not going to learn how they learn and how they learn best until we back up a little bit and say, okay, you can communicate, you can have this discussion with your teacher, you can get this work done, and I, I'm watching. But we don't know how long this pandemic's gonna be, and unless you want to be a personal assistant to your child, they have to learn how to learn and communicate in a different way.
When we talk about mental health, I was thinking more so about what do we do to support our students? And when you talk about coming from a, a school, district, or institution, I fought for us to have adverse childhood experiences training, but you have to be able to see it all the way through to know who will be those student social workers. If those student social workers do not, can identify with the majority of students of color that they are serving and black students, then it makes it extremely challenging to help them learn how to cope and overcome. That, did you want to say something, Sam?
Mm-hmm. So there's, there's, there's a lot, um, I'll keep it to a minimum. What if we tried taking a journal, parents, get the same, you know, the same, same, or what have you, and allow that child to write, and you all exchange the book back and forth? You don't have to talk about anything that's inside of it verbally, but allow that child to just brain dump about their day. And if you're not the parent who can actually do it, maybe you talk to the principal or you talk to their teacher and say, look, this is, I, I can't get anything out of this child, because that was a big thing inside of our, our peer group with my son, who's 13, was we didn't know anything was wrong with our children during the pandemic, they were just fine. But then the last week of school, when everything had to be turned in, they were in tears, all of them. Male, female, it didn't matter, they were in tears, they were keeping up with the work, they were sleeping a lot, they were eating a lot, they didn't want to go outside. These middle schoolers were, I'm not, I'm not a professional, but what I would think depressed at the time.
Well, and they're not supposed to be okay right now. If, like, that would be an abnormal reaction to, to trauma. And part of the problem with Western culture is, you know, to use a different example that a lot of people really understand, I had a Michael Caine baby at 26 weeks, right? I had been on bedrest for several months, and then I came out of it depressed, and the doctor's like, do you want some meds for that? And I was like, am I supposed to feel great right now? The answer is no, I'm not supposed to feel great, and you don't feel great because that's your body letting you know.
Something is amiss.
That something is amiss, and we need to honor and we need to respect that. And one of the viewers had, wrote that the adults in the school And one of the viewers had, wrote that the adults in the school system need to learn and to listen to student voices, and that she would love to let her son step up, but unfortunately, his voice is not valued. Well, when your child's voice is not valued, and you, as the parent, give them the right to have that voice, that's when you step in, because I stay lawyered up and I will flip the table.
None of us doubt that. None of us doubt it at all.
Like, you don't, they don't want me... Because, you know, we have co-ops, and our co-ops in California are often charter schools. So the kids will be at the charter, and I'll get a phone call. And by the time this school gets around to calling me, I already know, because we have open communication. So I'm like, this, you know, my kid is sitting there, and she's like, ah, I already called my mom. You have fun with that discussion right there, because I gave you my boundary and you didn't respect it. So as parents, our job is to reinforce our children's voice. Give them the power to have a voice and then reinforce it, and make sure that people understand you not respecting their voice is not optional.
Chanelle said something earlier. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Shirena. Chanelle said something earlier that I, that I kind of filed away, and I wanted to bring back up. I think we're supposed to be done at four, but I'm fearful if I bring this topic up, the Black Youth Leadership Project is gonna need to allot us about another hour or two, because it's gonna take us in a number of directions. Chanelle, you were talking about, you know, we've talked about inequality in education. You were talking about the curriculum, and you're talking about things that are actually taught. You know, over the course of the last, you know, couple of months, you know, we have seen, you know, statements from major companies like Amazon and a variety of companies talking about, you know, Black Lives Matter. And we've seen, you know, we're gonna change, and we're gonna listen, and we're gonna do this, and we're gonna do that. And now all of a sudden, it's like, okay, good. You know, one thing that we all kind of decided is, yeah, maybe we start in the educational system. You know, maybe we start here, because I know it, it's, it's, it's a running joke for some people until you realize it's not a joke that black history in America started with, it started with slavery, and then it goes to like Abraham Lincoln, and then Martin Luther King, and then everything's been okay ever since. Like, we're good. Nothing, nothing, nothing to steal here.
Right? Because I can keep pushing. I've always pushed racial equity. But if I didn't have the right superintendent, if I didn't have the right leadership, if I didn't have a governing board that I have to truly convince that, look at our data and look at our student-to-teacher ratio, and why are we not hiring individuals that reflect the demographic of our district? If we are paying administrators to go recruit teachers, and they're going to the same colleges, you have to have well-involved from a standpoint of governance. You have to be, not only be involved, but you really have to like push for that. Because they will try to pacify you and just hire somebody who look like your skinfolk, but that's not necessarily committed to doing the work. That's why school, school district strategic plans are important, and that's why you hold your elected governing board members accountable. Because if, I don't know what's happening with parents. You want to know why? Because if I'm in an institution that's being ran by somebody who honestly do not necessarily care that much about our kids, if you take a look at the, the literacy percentages and how many students can actually read in the school, you need people like us who are within the system, so that our kids who are in the system, we can fight to transform it. We are always told that, no, you cannot. Yes, you can. But it takes a lot of hard work, and it takes will and understanding of the system so that we can crack through. So while people have their different options, I'm trying to put this system to make sure that one, we have administrators that look like us. Two, that we have a commitment to hiring these educators and people within our system that's gonna have our same set of values. We have passed board resolutions, the most recent one is our commitment to black lives. While that's gonna be something that's more, that's in writing, and it's gonna be institutionalized, is because of a transition that we went through to hire a superintendent that understands and cares and reflects the demographic of the students it is that we serve. But that also takes a committed board to say, guess what? Hey, if we're getting textbooks and you want us to pass this, and I know that there have been false information about regarding black history, then we have to go above and beyond and to scoop that research-based African-American history, which is something that our school district has done.
Chris, get in there.
Yeah, one, so I'm gonna throw a piece, and I'll be quick, but I'm gonna throw a piece, because Brother Damon, you said, once we get into this, it can take off, and it, it just might. Um, what we are talking about is, you know, how do we fix this and holding people accountable, et cetera, et cetera. A, a, a language that is brewing right now is abolishing practices, is dismantling practices, is we are trying to fix systemic things that are built wrong in the first place.
That part.
At one point, at some point, we gotta get to the place, and now might be the time.
Now is the time.
Of protest that is high right now, right now is the time. But the Band-Aids clearly do not work.
Absolutely.
You started about abolishing and dismantling and systemic problems, which create problems on the backend. We're so weak in things on the backend, the, the problem is the system.
Absolutely.
Fix it at that depth level before we go anywhere.
So that is...
Let's go to Day and then Sam. Go ahead.
That is something that is so near and dear to my heart. Um, one of the reasons that we started homeschooling many, many years ago was because of that right there. Um, uh, Brown, you know, the, the title of this whole segment is Black versus the Board of Education. So therefore, I'm assuming that we know how long ago Brown versus the Board of Education was, uh, went down. Now, from there, we have Ruby Bridges integrating, um, the public schools. And prior, even prior to that, we fought just to have a god dog on education, right? So systemically, it's, it's, it's not even systemic. It just is the system, right? It, it, that's just how it's built. So when we, um, you know, I, I think there is definitely a place for um, black faces to be at board meetings and make changes for public education. But there's also space for our parents to, to feel empowered, to pull their kids out and say, you know what? Not my kid. Here's a, here's a better way. Now, if we're going to talk about, um, educating our black child, then we need to make sure that we don't just pump them full of information, that we're also supporting their identity as a black child. Um, the, the, the science curriculum needs to make sure that we highlight not only the achievements of, of black, uh, scout, uh, black scientists and black engineers and whatnot. We need to make sure that we, when we enroll and study DNA, biology tells you who the original people were. So if we're gonna talk about it, let's talk about it. And we're gonna bring, and I, I want to find the governor who's going to say, yes, let's, let's, let's put that into our curriculum. They're not gonna, because the system wasn't designed to give the black child their identity, which is the reason why we...
Everybody, hold on.
I'm sorry. Y'all get me started on that one. Don't do that.
I, I, I knew that I would, but I knew I couldn't. We could not touch on this. We, we had to. So I want to go Sam, and then Shirena, then you. Corinne, I want to get your thoughts, and then we'll wrap up. Sam, go ahead.
Right, because my leg is over here twitching. In Los Angeles, three out of 10 black children are at reading level in this system. Two out of 10 black students are on grade level for math in this system. Something is wrong. They don't care about our kids.
They don't.
Period. You have children who come over from ESL and all these other places from different countries. This is our country, and they end up faring better? Come on now. Where, the, the achievement gap, it's not even an achievement gap at this point. It's just the way it is. So if it is the way that it is, you as a parent have to think about something different for your child. Every other culture has uh, Jewish school on Saturday. They have, you know, math on Saturdays and this, that, and the other. As a community, we need to wake up and understand that this is the time. 1619, they say, is the time that we came over, right? It's been 400 years, 400 years. COVID-19, it's time to get our babies back. Get them to people who about them. I said it.
I, I'm here for it. So two things. One, curriculum is great, but I was a classroom teacher for a lot of years, and I'm really good at. My opinion, not too many people did it better. Not to the horn, but it is what it is. Because I have my students, who I haven't been in the classroom in a decade, who are still calling me saying, hey, I need support with X, Y, and Z. I still need this. Hey, my child is going through this now. What can I do? We need to understand the role of the teacher, because curriculum is great. But if you're a teacher who knows your curriculum inside out, forward and backwards, I can add anything to a curriculum, and I can make it valid and prove it. So you can say, oh, well, the curriculum starts with Ruby Bridges? Okay, but I'm teaching to 2020. Because everything that happened then impacts what we have now. So a big part of it is understanding who your children's teacher is and making sure that they have, um, your support as the parent in really teaching and not just regurgitating what their curriculum is, because I've never seen a perfect curriculum. Um, I've never seen one that I even like classify as good. Final thoughts. We have to make sure that as a people, we make decisions that are best for our children as an individual and as a collective community.
Absolutely.
We cannot leave our children to suffer in a broken system while we try to fix it. If you have the ability to remove and fix simultaneously, that's what we're doing with BYLP. My children are divested, and I'm at the school board meeting, and I'm behind the scenes doing IEP support, and I'm doing other things, because we can do both. But we don't have to allow our children to continue to be a victim of a system that is not for them while we're doing it. And check me out tomorrow. Lorraine gave me an hour. I'm teaching, y'all. I'm teaching. It's fun. Um, so...
An hour isn't gonna be enough time. You better get that girl another, you better get that girl another hour. Corinne, can you jump in here, please? Go ahead.
Yes, um, so I love everything that everybody is saying, and um, so kind of to the point that's been raised, right? Um, this system was built to do exactly what it is doing. It's not a mistake. It's not by accident. It is on purpose, right? Um, and the reason that I ran for the school board, or I was encouraged to run for the school board, was to be a part of that, not because me as one individual was going to fix that for all of our children, but the fact of the matter is, not everybody has the ability to homeschool, to pull their kid out and to give them everything that they need and that they, that they want, right? So what I am trying to do, my point in being there, my place there, is to change as much as I can for those that are there, make it as comfortable as possible, make them as successful as possible within that system. Again, are we failing our kids? Absolutely. I know that for a fact. But somebody needs to be there, because if I wasn't even there to say what I say, things would be much worse, and it would continue just as it is. So um, I just want to say, I agree with all of you. Thank you so much for all you do to support families who are able to homeschool and, and, you know, charter schools everywhere else. But um, yeah, it, I am there because all of our kids can't, and so we need to support them while they're still in this system, unfortunately.
I saved that question for last to give everybody a reason to tune in the next time we get together. Um, thank each and every single one of you, uh, for what you do. Uh, you guys are absolutely amazing. We greatly appreciate, uh, your time today. We appreciate everybody who tuned in here on the Black Youth Leadership Project, whether it's on YouTube or on Facebook. This conversation will be archived. If you missed any part of it, you can go back and check it out on a variety of different platforms. Uh, but I'm Damian Barling. On the behalf of all of our panelists, uh, we thank you so much for joining us here today.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.